We should have recording transcript. I don't have my notes in front of me, I apologize. But basically, all questions should be directed to the village board. If they are accepting any questions, please act with decorum. And I'm full out of them today. It's been a busy morning, so everybody, please bear with us. But thank you for attending. And obviously, we're working on the public pandemic guidelines this time.
Thank you. Also, this is a special meeting. The notification went out three days ago. You may want to speak to that, Dorothea?
Yes. I'm going to personally apologize to the village board. Notification went out. There was some misunderstanding of calling the board about the meeting and making sure the time is good for everybody. The person went ahead and just posted and got it up because there was sensitivity and some urgency to couple of the items. So in the future, we will make sure you are properly pulled, that you have availability for a meeting. But with those corrections, it was posted properly. It was notified properly. It just lacked a little bit of courtesy that we should give at all times.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dorothea. The first item on the agenda today is our COVID-19 policy. I believe, you know, we all received the original policy that was adopted, I believe, this past March.
Correct. I mean, we had that in the packet.
Right. And then also, there are additional sort of, you know, CDC guidelines that are revised because now we're dealing with people who are vaccinated and unvaccinated. And so, in the interest, again, this is a time-sensitive item, obviously, because the pandemic is still ongoing. So we're bringing this back to the board for review of the additional information and whether or not we need to update our policy and provide additional guidelines going forward. So with that in mind, did everybody get a chance to kind of take a look at the new CDC guidelines? I can tell you that what we are doing right now, Village Hall, and I believe we let the board know, let the public know now as well, we are all, whether you are vaccinated or unvaccinated now, when you come into Village Hall, you must wear a mask. Additionally, all staff are taking temperatures of anybody coming into the building and recording that. Again, because there are certainly vaccinated people that may actually have COVID but just be asymptomatic. And so, we just want to maybe possibly catch if there's a little bit of a fever or something. So we do have those protocols back. We also have, you know, wiping down, you know, all of the things that we were doing, certainly early on, we're maintaining that. I don't know, Dorothea, if there's anything you would like to add to that? But that's pretty much where we are.
Visitors coming to the office will be, as you said, getting the temperature. We're also recording equipment information to contact you if there is an outbreak at the hall. Unfortunately, that is very costly. I mean, visitors during the day. And we're not discouraging people from coming in at this point, although it always is wise to call and make an appointment, make sure people are here and available for you. We're just taking those extra steps to make sure we can contact someone because we can't control all kinds of environment.
Also, we had a phone call, conference call earlier today with our employment and labor attorney, Christian Cassini, just about how we want to take a look at maybe updating our policy. So he mentioned a couple of things that we want to share with you today. One is, as we all know, that one of the vaccines, the Pfizer vaccine, has received full FDA approval. And that happened quite recently. It's also our understanding that, you know, the Moderna is forthcoming as well in terms of full FDA approval. So with that in mind, there also can be mandated by any employer going forward that all employees should be vaccinated to be able to work, whether it's in their company or here or any other entity or organization. And that really is across the board. I'm sure many of you have seen the news and you realize that many companies are already implementing that. So I think that's something that we may want to discuss now as a board about how do we move forward, knowing that vaccines are getting full FDA approval? And where do we go from here with that? How does that, how should that be reflected in our policy going forward? So, and I would appreciate any comments from the board and any thoughts from the board at all.
What did they say about testing as well? So like if someone isn't, employees are what I'm most concerned about. There's no mandate for vaccines. Then testing should be.
Right. For unvaccinated people, they would, the consideration would be that they have some type of disability or medical reason where they cannot receive a vaccination. And that information would be provided by their doctor. Or for religious reasons. Those really were the two areas cited from our attorney. So anybody who would remain unvaccinated and in their employment would be tested weekly. We would, the encumbrance, the financial encumbrance would be on us to do so. And he also mentioned that we could receive training to actually do ourselves onsite testing, rapid testing. That is certainly an option which would potentially reduce our costs. But understand, it is a rapid test. It is not the, can everyone remember the acronym for the other? P R, PCR or something?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, so, which is, which has a little more of a higher level of threshold for, you know, whether or not you actually have COVID. Again, so that would be.
So the cost, we will have to incur the cost for testing.
Yes.
They can't, you can't send people to the Freeman Road County sites for testing? I don't even know if those.
We can send them, I believe we can send them, let them go to the free site. We're going to pay for their time to go as well.
Okay.
So either way, there is always an expense incurred by our village. We do, as you know, have a few people that are unvaccinated. So, you know, we're certainly looking at it weekly basis. So it's not just like one person, it's several people. So that would be an ongoing expense for into the future. You know, I think at this point, we don't really know what that looks like further out, so.
Did Christian say how you establish a religious?
Yeah, I was wondering that too.
Right. It is not so clear, as you can imagine. I think the disability component is far more clear. So.
It's, yeah. Yeah, it's one of those items where they present their beliefs or they have a note from their pastor or whatever person, their related church. And we can take that.
What is religion after all?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's really, it's a difficult thing for us to challenge. But it is something, it is a way for them to escape from the testing. Yeah, so, or I'm not testing.
Yeah, yeah, getting vaccinated.
But either way, I think the board, I recommend to the board that we go to a full mandatory vaccination and also any new hires be required to be fully vaccinated.
Yeah, and we've had.
So mandatory for all existing staff? I agree, wholeheartedly.
I just, there's safety involved. It helps. I mean, it's not going to eliminate risk 100%. I don't think we can in these times, but we need to do what we can. Because being honest, where we have our weakest link right now is Village Hall. And that brings to other issues with the board that, you know, protocols and things I think we need to look at. As we're looking right now, things are whipping up.
Want to make a motion to make it mandatory? Hold on, just let me get this out.
I was going to suggest that you might want to, in your motion, think about the whole addendum to this policy, the testing, blah, 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 blah.
Just itemized?
No, I'm just, you can do it in two motions. It doesn't matter.
The motion I want to make is for all full-time or part-time employees of the villages of Pittsburgh to have mandatory vaccination.
And public officers?
Sure.
What about the, what about the, we'll just.
What I'm going to recommend, we also have to vote, speak to the union.
That was the next one.
Because we have the union component. And we need to get their sign off and agreements with them that they're in compliance and agree with what we're doing. So what I would say is, the actual order from the board would be to direct us to work with Christian Cassini to derive the policy. So you have something official to vote on.
Okay.
That you're in agreement and we can get the union on board on the steps needed.
For the union members only. You can go ahead and do policy not applicable to union members.
Well, actually, our labor attorney advises to do one policy for everybody and then all the other shop.
Yeah.
So whatever is it the union says no?
Then we can make steps and go that way.
We can remedy it.
I'm not, I'm not going to get in the way of Christians.
You have to go back to the office.
Well, no, he's got the waivers.
Yeah.
I can wait until I turn the motion to second too. But I just had a question, and maybe this is a general new trustee question. I hope I'm still allowed to ask a couple of those. As I understand it, the mayor is the supervisor of the staff and the village board is the legislative board that does not have the ability to supervise the staff. So legally, are we being asked for an opinion? Or is this a determination of this board that has a direct bearing on the staff that is supervised by the mayor?
I would suggest that this, this is not a supervisory issue. This is a policy issue that should be, if the board feels that it's appropriate, endorsed by the entire board. You know, it may be up to the mayor at that point to enforce the policy. But it feels more like a policy than a supervisory function.
And in fact, the initial policy, if I'm correct, was adopted by the entire Board of Trustees. And I would say, and I think you raised an interesting point. I would say that as soon as we saw that, you know, what was going on with the surge from the unvaccinated component of the population primarily, we just, we all stepped up. I mean, we just said, we need to reinstate what we already have right now. And so, that's what's bringing us here right now to bring it to another level. Because in that interim, the Pfizer vaccine received full FDA approval. So that changes perhaps how we review our policy going forward.
What's the enforcement? So there's a motion on the floor. Do we want to, does anybody want to second it?
I would, it sounds to me like the advice from the labor attorney is to amend the motion to include something about such time as the union signs off on this, is you can get that.
Right, we negotiate with the union. If they're in agreement, you know, what do we have to do to make it acceptable with them?
So here's the challenge in that. All of our union employees are vaccinated already. So I don't want, I don't want that to be bottleneck for the people who aren't vaccinated.
I agree, and I admit, I believe that this is going to be very easy. The question though, that does propose, we are looking for, we're going to be going out for another labor, is making sure the component of, that the new staff member is vaccinated as well. That has to be negotiated with the union because it's a union shop. So we want to check all the boxes and make sure everything is sound.
Sure, I totally agree with that. It's just the immediate problem is the office staff who's not union. And so, I don't want any delay in the policy for the office staff.
And let me, let me just add on to that because I think we also, you know, it takes time to be vaccinated. Do we want to give by a certain date or how would that? You know, in other words, there's a few more moving parts, you know, especially if you're getting like a two-part vaccination, you know, lining things up, you know, all of that. So we may want to think about.
Correct. We're going to want to give at least six to eight weeks for everybody to get this resolved. In fairness to the employees and getting everything needed set in place because we have to write the policy, which we need to directly, which we need to do.
And then are we going to give so they don't have to take PTO if they are, they have symptoms from the vaccine if they're feeling terrible?
We're already doing that.
Yeah, that happens.
It is currently. We've been doing.
Are all of them members of the DPW actually?
Yes. Yes, they are.
Also want to remove the incentive for the extra vacation day? Because they already had that chance, they didn't take it. So now that we're making it mandatory, it doesn't feel right to reward the people that didn't take advantage of it.
So, what did you say?
Any thoughts from the board?
Just to clarify, so the motion is to direct our labor attorney to prepare the policy, which would then be brought back to the board so that we could review and what about that policy? Is that what we're talking about?
That would be my recommendation as well. Because you should see the policy you're, you're building.
And also to negotiate with the union as well. You know, that would be included in the motion. And understand, this can be turned around fairly quickly. This isn't, you know, weeks out, so.
We need to turn it fairly quickly. And I would suggest we have the workshop meeting coming in hopefully by that point. We'll be able to adopt it and get every, all the pieces in place.
I will second the motion.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay, trustee Steitzer?
Well, now, we have further things to discuss. It sounds right before we completely adopt this. Dan has recommended or suggested that we remove the provision of extra time off.
Do you want it in the same motion?
Well, we're talking about the policy, right? That we're going to take to them. I would like to leave that in there and would like to hear what others think. So I get what you're saying, Dan. I also want the.
It just feels like we put the carrot on the stick, they didn't take it. So now we're going to make it mandatory and then we're going to reward them. And that doesn't make any sense to me.
I mean, there was a reason, I hear what you're saying. That was put in place to incentivize people to take that initiative on their own to do this.
But you're, I mean, you're still going to reimburse them for the time to get their vaccine.
Yeah, oh yeah, for sure.
You just mean if they're not feeling well, we just stay after the vaccine?
Well, that's a different issue than rewarding vacation.
Yeah, this was an upfront, one-time incentive. I hear what you're saying. Yeah, I actually am in agreement with Dan on this. I think, you know, because I think the people who did step up, and we just had somebody recently step up. They thought about it and they took the incentive and got the vaccination. You know, so I think this, it is, this is a different circumstance. That's just.
But I also hear you that you want a, you want a positive reinforcement.
Well, they'll be paid, paid to go get the shot and whatever time they need. I don't know. I mean, I'm just, you know.
I don't want to have us get stuck on this, so.
Well, I also wonder how the other employees who did already take the initiative to do it would feel that somehow people, because now it's mandated, like, well, jeez, now what? They get a vacation, I could have waited to, you know, like, what does that mean? How does that reflect back on all the other employees that made that decision to go ahead and vaccinate? Yeah, Justin?
I can see both sides of this one. I personally would defer to the mayor since she's the direct supervisor and has the best field for how this can be rolled out.
I defer to the board. I think we're talking about policy moving forward. I mean, and I've expressed, you know, what I thought. I think, you know, an incentive is given for a very specific reason.
So one way to do it, we could split the difference and say the incentive is still in place until a new policy. So you've got a week to take advantage of that if you want. And you don't have to take that vacation day in the week. You could just get the left vacation time for Christmas. It doesn't matter. You do, you get your one day. Was it one day, two days? What was it? It was one day?
An actual day. Yeah, that's a nice way to just kind of split the difference, actually.
You mean that people involved want to know that the board is moving in this direction? It gives them an opportunity to go get the process started. And once they get the first shot, I will know and be ready to organize the second shot and stuff.
And the availability of that, because the vaccine is still as great as it was months ago when we started this. So it's not like that's a deterrent. You can go out, go to the dome tomorrow.
You could walk into lightness, walk into a drugstore. Yeah.
And if you sense that I'm out of patience on this? I am out of patience on this.
No, I like your idea, like saying this is coming. If you take advantage of it now.
Yeah, so the incentive stays, so it's amended with.
You've already got the policy in place.
Okay, we're good. But it just stays up until then.
And I like the way you put this. The board is leaning that way, so you might want to take advantage of it now.
Kind of a heads up.
Yeah.
Okay, well, all right. This is, you really raised a good point. I thought it was a good discussion. So where are we with this? It's all amended or do we have a?
We'll do the roll call. Trustee Steitzer?
Aye.
Trustee Lantheer?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion casted. Real quick, still talking COVID. I just want to say, my office is the weakest link right now. I don't say that lightly, related to the COVID measures. If things continue to be on the uptick, I very well might look at segregating my staff and having one person offsite. I talked to her about this because we had a scare not too long ago. And technically, I would have been the only person able to come in and open the office.
And that was only because she happened to be on vacation. You know, so.
The thought of having someone home working might be a necessity considering the office may be holding out until we get to a better vaccinated status or in a better environment.
Can that be something that you and the mayor?
We would, I was watching the numbers and I would say, we can make that call. I just want the board to know that it's. It's where I'm kind of leaning just because it occurred to me when I was wondering, ooh. Yeah, because we would, protocol would have to be, everybody would have tested. Office has to be cleaned. We still have to open at some point to serve the public. So at that point, we would have to. So that's where I'm kind of thinking, if we have at least one staff member working from home, we have a coverage.
Yeah, we have coverage.
Just so the board aware. And obviously, if we go to that measure, we will.
And also, just on another note, there's still, I guess, in Albany trying to figure out if there will be a possibility of virtual meetings that is still floating around out there. But there's quite a bit of discussion and input to Albany on that. Okay, next item, Canal Corporation clearcutting. Oh, sorry. Oh, yes, you have one more.
Drinking fountains, that has come back. It was going to be shown again with the drinking fountains giving the uptick and everything going on. Where is the board leaning? Should we shut them down again?
I mean, last time we used Monroe County Health as our guideposts. You know, are they shutting them down in parks?
We can have, direct him to contact them and see.
I'm okay with that.
So if they're shutting it down, go ahead and shut them down.
I don't know what others feel, but it seems to be a good guidepost.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it is so virulent, you know, the, this particular variant. The idea of everybody going up to the same drinking fountain is a tremendous concern to me.
I mean, we can just make that decision.
I would prefer to shut them down, to be honest with you.
I'd agree, yeah.
And can we put a notice out? Given the need, people ask a lot about those who turned on and just let everyone know.
No, you do that. Thank you, Sam.
Do we have to make a motion?
You could, I mean, you could reset the motion.
I'll make a motion to turn the water fountains off and so will, like, just.
You monster.
I don't want to do that.
I need a greek day.
I'll second the motion.
Trustee Steitzer?
Aye.
Trustee Lantheer?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion casted.
Any other thing on the COVID?
I think we.
Okay, one more thing. Well, it's just that we were just informed that the highway department in the town is shut down. They had four COVID cases of vaccinated people with no symptoms. So, you know, that's why I'm saying it's so virulent.
Are we helping out? You know, do they need us to, are they asking for our help?
I think they have essential staff.
Yeah, there's just a few essentials right now. But we're on it if they need help.
So that's where concern comes from. You just never know what's at that point.
And yet Albany's still sitting on the virtual meeting idea when we've got, I mean.
Well, it can only come from the governor.
But can't we just do that? Who's going to sue us? There's nobody in this room. It's all available, it's all available on Zoom anyway.
It's legal.
It's not a legal meeting. And, and, well, you just, you say, you know, somebody just sue us. And not only is suing a possibility, but voiding all of the X per such an illegal meeting is a real possibility. I don't think you really want to go through all the work of doing something only to have it. Possibly not worth the time you spend on it.
So then we need to just advocate with our state leadership to put pressure on the governor?
There's no way they could legislate this, no way, strong.
It could be an executive order.
That they could legislate this quickly. But if you have to, in order to do the executive order, she has to declare another state of emergency.
Exactly. That's why it's sort of spinning around on it, you know.
Yeah, they don't want to do that.
I know there's two of us on this board that have a hard stop at one. So wanted to move, move along.
Okay, so we're, and there was, there was another action that we needed to take as well.
Oh, it was the conference approval for Doug Yager in general to attend the Ice and Snow Conference. It was $50.
It was Rhodes, local Rhodes?
I'll make the motion.
Yes.
$50?
$50 each.
I'll make a motion to allow that.
I'll second. Trustee Steitzer?
Aye.
Trustee Lantheer?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Motion casted.
Okay.
I'm out of stuff.
Okay, all right. Okay, so the Canal Corporation regarding, you know, clearcutting and you all sent the information, you know, to review. They are asking for comments from municipalities to be put forth, or I guess, response by September 5th, which is Sunday. It's actually over a weekend. So you've had a chance to read it. I think, you know, this board also was made aware of the clearcutting issue in 2017, 18. I think that's.
Will you okay?
Yeah, I'm just going to get some more.
Yeah, okay.
I have allergies, okay.
Oh dear, yeah, they're terrible today.
I did have a question about the lawsuit that the, that parent in Pittsburgh and, um, were involved in last year. And they, was, does that include the village areas in that or does that just count?
No, can't.
It can't, so we, so they could come and.
No.
Yeah, let's have Jeff weigh in because Jeff's been really, really following us. He's so.
So they can, they've stopped. So nobody's going to get cleared out until they finish their secret.
I thought they did that on the environmental review.
That's, that's what this is the end of.
Okay.
It's September 5th. Now, they didn't do secret correctly. But I, you know, I think that ship has sailed insofar as the practicalities are concerned. I wouldn't spend a lot of time or money contesting the secret case. The real player in this, in this situation is the PCBA because they have local waterfront consistency review authority, which is an approval that this project needs in order to go forward. Now, the Canal Corporation probably doesn't agree with that, but they're wrong. So I think, you know, getting the PCBA going on this is pretty critical. And we've talked about a lot of different things to do in terms of finding other, believe it or not, Brighton does not have a local waterfront consistency program. So, you know, it's just, it's kind of weird. But I think that one action item would be to get, find out the other municipalities and make sure they're aware, their local waterfront consistency program, revitalization program is really the technical word. They probably have the tools to do something about this situation in their own municipalities. So that's really going to be where I think this plays out. I'm assuming that it's going to, they're going to come up with a condition negative declaration when they're all done. And they will start clearcutting. And that's where they have to stop. Somebody's got to lay in front of a bulldozer because, for instance, in our village, they can't just do that. They need planning board approval.
Does it make sense for us to join that lawsuit?
No, not at this point. Why not? That lawsuit's done.
You told me the previous lawsuit.
The final, it was a final.
Okay, okay.
Final decision, final decision was, you must comply with secret. The next lawsuit, if there is one, will be, you didn't comply with a local municipal zone. And that's a whole different lawsuit.
Well, this applies to the town too, just of the village. The town has the.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
It will apply to, sorry, interject, but it will apply to a number of towns and villages along the canal system that have the L W R P.
So that's what I think where our emphasis should be. The whole basis, I believe, the whole basis of where the Canal Corporation is coming from is policies by the Army Corps of Engineer in California that talk about how you maintain banks and removal of trees is the number one thing you do. And now the mayor had a great idea that, you know, well, does that really, is that empirically, is that empirically established by bank failures? As you know, the town attorney just sent everybody a copy of what he submitted. It seems to me that one item would be wise, depending on how the board feels about the clearcutting, is to craft a similar letter, not reinventing the wheel, changing it for whatever is appropriate and getting it out.
Yeah.
Agreed. So I think the more piling on that can happen, if we could energize other, you don't need an L W R P to do this. This is just a pure and simple, how do we feel about it? If you could energize other communities.
I have to point to your vacation and excuse me, as you've already covered one of the other room. Is this the power authority that we're?
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not Canal Corp.
The Canal Corp, no, no. The Canal Corp is now under the umbrella of the power authority. They were under the umbrella of the New York State Thruway. They have been moved to the power authority.
And that is what happened in 2017, which prompted the clearcutting round the first time. Right. Because when it was under the Thruway authority, the clearcutting never was brought forth as somehow a solution, looking for a problem.
So this is just a typical administrative decision. It'll be easy if we keep track of the bank if we cut everything off it.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so is the motion to draft the letter?
The motion is, I think, given the timing. The motion would be to allow the mayor and the law's attorney to craft a letter based upon the town attorney's letter and then authorize the mayor to send it out. Because I don't see another way to have a meeting between now and then.
And send us a draft.
Oh, yeah, it's a work in progress, so, but it's time sensitive, which is why we, you know, we're speaking about it right now.
I think we're all in favor of responsible pruning. We're not in favor of clearcutting.
This is, this is 60-year-old trees they're taking down.
Yeah.
But I read the letter, so I have no doubt.
So I'll make the motion to, exactly what Jeff said. Did you capture it or do you need it again? Okay.
I'll second. Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lantheer?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion casted.
Okay, great. Okay, any, let's see, I make a motion to go into executive session? Is there a second?
Purpose of which is?
Oh, thank you. Purpose is for human resource matter?
It's a single important. One second. Okay. I guess.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion casted.